There we go, it just came on. All right, I gotta start over. Hey, everybody, welcome. It's January 7th, 2025. Welcome to the reorganization meeting of Princeton, New Jersey. We are going to start with our meeting statement, please.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, including the time, date, and location of the meeting. In addition, the agenda and all related materials were posted electronically and made available to the public on Princeton's meeting portal in advance of the meeting.
Thank you. Eve's going to do the land acknowledgement.
We gather today on the land of the Lenape. As members of the Princeton community, we aspire to show appreciation, respect, and concern for all peoples and our environment. We honor the Lenape and other indigenous caretakers of these lands and waters, the elders who lived here before, the indigenous today, and the generations to come.
Thank you, Eve. Could we have a roll call of the 2024 council?
Ms. Peron-Lambros?
Here.
Ms. Nedergang?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Ms. Fraga?
Here.
Mr. Newland?
Here.
Mayor Frida?
Here.
You have quorum.
If you're able to stand and want to do so and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, let me thank everyone for being here. I want to call out, although I think everybody's aware, Governor Murphy has joined us this evening. Thank you very much, Governor. Senator Zwicker is here. Assemblyman Roy Feiner-Fryman is here. My bad, sorry, I'm getting nervous. And Assemblywoman Michelle Geralis is here. And former mayor of Trenton, Doug Palmer, who are all, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Governor Murphy, you have the floor.
I have the floor.
May I? Please.
I want to thank Mark and council for allowing me to say a few words. This is a community that's very important from a very personal level to me. If you roll the clock way back, the very first group meeting, as I spoke before, a thousand years ago, very early days, it was called Archibaldi, it was the PCBO. Liz and I grabbed some coffee, so we'll leave those early days. What was it called?
World's End.
World's End. Mark and I worked together a thousand years ago at Goldman Sachs, and I'm honored to be here tonight. The governor's mansion is five minutes from here, and we spend an enormous amount of time, less living there than mostly celebrating what's so special about New Jersey. Our son Charlie is a recent graduate of Princeton University. I could go on if you had. Of all the 565 seniors, Princeton for us at very personal levels is the very top handful, so I'm honored to be back tonight. I'm honored to be here with Mark and his colleagues, as well as Brian, where's Brian? Congratulations to you and to Lathan.
Thank you, sir.
And to the election, and again, Mark, to your election as well. And also to the other elected officials, others, my old friend, great leader, Andrew Roy, Michelle, everybody here, especially members of law enforcement and personal services. I don't want to take up a whole lot of your heaving on this school night, but just to say, this has been a crazy, this last year was kind of a crazy year in the world, and my guess is it's not going to get less crazy in 2025. We've still got two full-on wars, we're still digging out from inflation and high interest rates and affordability challenges. We've got a new federal administration coming in in 13 days, and that's usually a challenging period. Normal circumstances, getting used to a new rhythm, never mind if these guys do a fraction of what they say they're going to do, there's going to be enormous repercussions all over New Jersey, will be no exception. Having said that, I'm a huge, all I know about the state, I didn't realize the state. I'm a huge fool in this state right now. That's not to say that we solve all of our problems, or that we don't have challenges, and we haven't, and we do, but I wouldn't trade our hand with any other American state for all those challenges I just went through and those yet to come. I'd love to play in our hand. We just got the data, this is one data point, it's one, but it says a lot. We just got the data of population from 2023 to 2024, and we're in the top 10 increase percentage wise, in the top half dozen, which is a pure draw number of lives. And I think that says a lot, that folks want to be here, that they like our values, they like our value proposition, that every state's got a bumper sticker, ours is the number one state in America to raise a family. We try to live by that all, as I know every single thing. There's no community that embodies that more so than Princeton. It's a quintessential New Jersey community. Now, we get a lot of people coming in, we have to make sure that our value proposition holds up, that you've got enough housing, particularly affordable housing, you've got seats in schools, you've got job opportunities, the trains work, the roads work. This is a place that can withstand roughly nine and a half million people. When I became governor, which was only seven years ago, we were under nine million. So for all this conversation about moving, there's more moving in than moving out, which again, I think is a good thing, but we have to make sure that we stay sharp and stay at the edge, the tight edge of that value proposition that includes our diversity, which we wear as a badge of honor, which includes our values. And you know all the stuff because we have that number one public education system in America. I can't do this alone, for sure. We have a great county, folks, great local leadership, and we've got great legislative partners. I'm going to have to sit through my state-of-the-state assessment today, because they hear some similar themes, by the way, just for one review. But again, outstanding, choppy environment, and that's to say the least. I love what we're doing collectively, putting in this great community in New Jersey. I think at a time like this, it's almost like a magnet, people are going to be attracted to professional, cold-headed, sticking to their values, put one foot in front of the other leadership. They want less drama, not more drama. They want to know they're standing by all of our communities, not just some, especially those most vulnerable. If you're holding your values dear, and you're a cool head, professional, doing your job. I think this group behind me exemplifies that, and I hope we do what best we can at the state level. And for all those reasons, I'm incredibly honored to be with you tonight. I'm going to short allow, swear I've marked in, and again, I wish Brian and Lathan the very best in their elections as well. Thank you very much.
I said, where's your family? How are you? Good to see you.
Hey, man.
Hi.
I gotta raise my right hand.
Yeah, you're right up.
Do you want this phone?
Sure.
Okay. Ready to rock?
Here you are.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Mark Frida.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We do it for the team, don't we?
Yeah.
One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on. We do barbists as well.
Thanks for coming.
No, we have two more.
Next up, Eve Nedergang, council member extraordinaire, is leaving us. I guess it's okay, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by thanking my family, who have put up with many late nights and distracted weekends. Andy, Miriam, and Sam, I could not have done this without your love, your gentle criticism, and your unwavering support. You've helped me sharpen my ideas and console me when things were challenging. I also want to thank my hardworking and dedicated colleagues on the governing body, who have made my six years on council memorable and sometimes even fun. Mayor Mark Frida, whose commitment to this community in which he has lived his entire life is unrivaled, and who runs our meetings with unwavering calm and courtesy.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lathan Newland, who never loses sight of his goal of care for those who are struggling, and whose commitment to Princeton's African-American community and its proud history is always clear. Councilwoman Michelle Peron-Lambros, whose dedication to strengthening our business community by creating Princeton's Special Improvement District has been greatly beneficial for the municipality. Councilwoman Letitia Fraga, whose passion for working with our youth and with Princeton's Spanish-speaking community has improved our outreach and conveyed the governing body's concern for all who live here. Councilwoman Mia Sax, whose knowledge base and connections to housing experts have been key to the implementation of our affordable housing plan. Councilman David Cohen, whose keen eye for detail, both architectural and otherwise, and grasp of the larger picture, is essential for our infrastructure development, financial health, and planning efforts. And I want to extend my best wishes to incoming Councilman Brian McDonald, whose financial acumen, passion for the arts, and commitment to the environment and sustainability will be a great asset to the governing body. I would also like to thank our fabulous municipal staff. I had many names in here, but I took almost all of them out in the interest of time. They turn our vision and goals into reality. Our municipal attorneys for keeping us out of trouble, our many community partners, without whom we could accomplish so much less, and the volunteers on our boards, commissions, and committees, who bring us their ideas and who work to implement ours. I want to spend a few minutes sharing some of the most important lessons I've learned during my time on council. The first lesson, it takes a really long time to get things, even small things, done. In my first year on council, the Princeton Environmental Commission urged council to pass an ordinance allowing for backyard poultry. I thought, this seems non-controversial, and we'll get this done in no time. It took about 15 months, the commitment of many individuals, and an inordinate number of meetings for this to become reality, but I hear the chickens are happy. Lesson two, you can't do anything on your own. I spent much of my time over the last six years working to preserve open space. At the end of 2021, we acquired 153-acre tract, which recently opened to the public, and on December 30th, 2024, we closed on the 90-acre tract, which means we've successfully preserved the two largest remaining tracts of open land in Princeton. The sheer number of partners involved in these acquisitions is astounding. The state of New Jersey's Greenacre Program, Mercer County, four separate environmental nonprofits, private donors, many members of our staff, members of several BCCs, and the Ridgeview Turtles. This coalition was unusually large, but virtually every council initiative involves the building of such partnerships and coalitions. Lesson three, sometimes you need to compromise. Although I continue to believe that a cannabis dispensary makes sense for Princeton because a dispensary and its revenue could have been used to promote equity goals. Early in the public discussions on this issue, there may have been an opportunity for compromise on a potential dispensary location. At that point, I didn't think compromise was necessary. I now think that my failure to seek a compromise was a failure of leadership, and I regret that I didn't try to find a solution that was acceptable to all. Another example, prompted by quiet Princeton, as well as numerous complaints about the noise and health effects of gas leaf blowers, I helped start the process to regulate gas leaf blowers in Princeton. With Sustainable Princeton and several other community partners, we worked with the predominantly Spanish-speaking landscaping communities and crews to build consensus around regulating this equipment. This effort kept equity and social justice goals foremost. Heeding the concerns expressed by the landscapers and their representatives, we crafted an ordinance that seasonally restricted but did not ban gas leaf blowers. We required landscaping companies to prove that they had workers' compensation insurance, so that injured crew members knew they would have access to medical care. We placed enforcement responsibilities for the ordinance with a new community compliance officer, rather than with the Princeton Police Department, so as not to erode trust issues between the police and the community. By taking the time to work together and share our foremost concerns, we were able to reach a compromise and successfully implement this initiative. Lesson four, be willing to trust your decisions and also be willing to change your mind. Early in my first term, an opportunity arose to buy a composter for use in our composting program. While I was initially very excited, research and a visit to the university, which operated a similar composter, made me realize that it was impractical for the town to manage this equipment. It took courage to be the sole no-vote on council. Ultimately, we sold the composter, as it was not feasible to operate it here, but this experience showed me that it was okay to come to a different conclusion than my colleagues. Another thing that happened early in my tenure, the installation of an artificial turf field at Hilltop Park, which had already been improved in concept but still required some authorizations from council. Despite some reservations, I felt that the project was so far along that it couldn't be changed or halted, and I voted in favor of taking those next steps. At the next environmental commission meeting, many members of the environmental commission and the public were deeply distressed about this decision. My very weak response at the time was, well, it had already been approved by council, and it's a done deal, was not, to say the least, greeted with acclaim. After that tumultuous meeting, I visited Hilltop Park and realized that a turf field, which couldn't be used for anything except as a playing field, would essentially monopolize the limited park area and deprive the affordable housing community directly across the street with access to green space. After that visit, and after reading the research compiled by PEC members, I worked to stop the installation of the turf field at Hilltop. Changing my position was somewhat embarrassing, but living with something that I didn't believe in was worse. Going to Hilltop also taught me that there is no substitute for a site visit. Ultimately, we installed an inclusive playground at Hilltop that is used by families from all over Princeton. Lesson five, leadership matters. As chair of the Personnel Committee, I led the search for a new municipal administrator in 2021. The head of the search firm that we worked with stressed to us that this would be the most important and consequential action we would take as governing body members. Those words of caution and wisdom really resonated with me and informed our efforts to find the best person for Princeton, which I believe we did. Administrator Bernie Hozdovic has been the unflappable, hardworking, and smart administrator that Princeton needs, and we are very lucky to have him. Alongside Bernie, we have two extraordinarily capable deputy administrators, administrators, Deanna Stockton, also our municipal engineer, and Jeff Grocer, also our health officer. I want to thank all three of these individuals for their leadership of our town, their hard work, their friendship, and their guidance. I also want to mention the importance of leadership at our police department. I can't imagine that there is a better police department in the state, and that is in large part due to the phenomenal leadership of Nick Sutter, Chris Morgan, John Buchary, and our current chief, Chris Tash. I want to thank them and the women and men who live the values of community policing and serve the people of Princeton every day. Final lesson, building good relationships is a key to success. Early in 2024, Princeton University and the municipality announced an historic five-year voluntary contribution agreement. In it, the university agreed to contribute to the municipality, to local nonprofits, and directly to residents to help address the economic and social needs of lower and middle-income residents, and to address climate resiliency and sustainability. This agreement was the result of resetting the relationship with the university to focus on the many shared interests in the community we jointly inhabit, as well as many months of discussion between our negotiating team, of which I was part, with our university partners. This agreement marks a significant step forward in building this important partnership. There were a lot of other things that I wanted to include here, and a lot of other people I wanted to thank, but this is already longer than I hoped for, so I'm going to make a final point and make a final statement of thanks. Most of us on council, and many more who live in this community, or would like to live in this community, can no longer afford to rent or buy a house in Princeton today. We must look at further changing our zoning to allow more moderate or middle-income housing, and I truly believe that the best way to do that is to allow multifamily housing throughout the municipality. While single-family zoning is seen by many as American as apple pie, it originated to exclude those seen as undesirable: people of color, poor people, single or divorced women, et cetera. We can and must do better if we wish to address the crises of housing affordability and homelessness. And like many things that look scary in the abstract, the reality of mixed zoning is not scary. Think of the tree streets with their mixes of duplexes and single-family homes, or the homes on Nassau or Wiggins that used to be huge, single-family homes and now house several apartments without any real sign of change in the streetscape. We can rise to meet these crises, and I truly believe that we should. Change is hard, but it is inevitable, and it cannot be stopped. If we don't manage change and make it work for us, we will be its victims. Ways of doing things that have worked in the past may not work going forward, and I believe that all of us need to recognize that fact. My final thanks go to my bosses, the people of Princeton, who saw fit to elect me twice, and whose welfare has always been my priority. Living in a town of smart, passionate, well-informed people results in a constant flow of input from the community to the governing body and our BCCs. While we don't always love hearing criticism, your ideas make us and the town better. I appreciate your wisdom and your passion. Thanks to all for a great six years.
First, we will do Councilman Lathan Newland, and his oath of office will be administered by Douglas H. Palmer, former mayor of Trenton.
I want it like the governor had it, so.
All right, put your left hand. Your right hand up. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lathan Newland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, my brother.
Thank you.
Next, we will have the oath of office administered to newly-elected Councilman Brian McDonald, and that oath of office will be administered by State Senator Andrew Zwicker, 16th Legislative District.
I, Brian McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Councilman.
Councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So is the change? As Eve steps off, Brian steps up. Okay, could we have a roll call of the 2025 council, please?
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Peron-Lambros.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Sax.
Here.
Ms. Fraga.
Here.
Mr. Newland.
Here.
Mayor Frida.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you very much. Next up is election of the council president. Is there a motion? David.
Yeah, I move to elect Mia Sax as council president.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Layton. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Mia Sax is the council president for 2025. So the oath of office to be administered to Mia as council president will also be performed, or administered, I should say, by State Senator Andrew Zwicker.
I state your name.
I, Mia Sax.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly. Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of council president. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me.
Next up is our consent agenda. There are 31 very exciting items: financial transactions that need to take place, contracts put in place, tax items, et cetera, a whole bunch of things that we have to do at the very beginning of each year to keep the government running. So if someone on council, thank you, Letitia, would move that consent agenda in block, Michelle has the second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, those 31 items are approved. Thank you very much. I have the pleasure of being able to give my remarks, and that will be followed by Mia's remarks and then the council members' remarks. First, I want to share some thank yous. Governor Phil Murphy, someone I believe has been an excellent governor and a true friend. I thank him for making time to be with us tonight. To my family, Beth, Rebecca, and Alex, thank you for your support, patience, and understanding that allows me to do this work. To everyone that helped me with my two campaigns, a sincere thank you. To all that voted for me, another sincere thank you. To all the residents that I have had the pleasure to interact with over the last four years. I appreciate those interactions. To our county, state, and federal elected officials and their staffs, thank you for your help and your support. To our municipal staff that help make us look good every day. I know how important you are to this town, and I know that many of you will be here much longer than any of us up here. I do have to admit that I love doing the work that goes along with being the mayor of this town. It is a privilege to serve our community. I try hard to reflect what I believe being an elected official should be. And those things are such as this: listen to others, as in actually hearing what they have to say and seriously considering their suggestions and opinions. When any of us decides our personal opinion is always right, that's a problem. Welcome differing opinions. We cannot always think of every possible point on every issue, so we should be open to listening to others that may bring forth something that we had not thought of or something that we were not fully aware of. We should always be open to changing our minds based on new or updated information. Be open and be honest. It's really simple. I know that I mean what I say. I do not believe in hidden agendas or playing word games with people. I prefer to be open, to be honest, and to be to the point. It is all about the people we serve. It is not about us. Never forget that. We are making business decisions. It is not personal when we disagree with each other. Never forget that. It is not always easy being up here when the room is full of a lot of people who do not agree with us, basically asking, "What the hell are we doing?" But that is part of our job, letting people express themselves, nicely, I hope, and our understanding that this is the place for the public to express their concerns on matters we are discussing. As many residents know, when you ask me to help you on something, I try my best to figure out how and who to help you. Some residents have been surprised that I have offered them sound advice even when I disagree with their goal, but they deserve my help as much as the people I agree with. Will I always make the decisions that you agree with? No. Will I always be right? No. Will you get my best effort every day? Yes, you will. The next four years, as far as my style and my core beliefs, will be very similar to the last four years. I will work hard for this town and everyone who lives and works here. I will strive to do my best every day. I will continue to listen to and seriously consider your opinions and suggestions. I will push the council to do what I believe is the right thing to do and to do it the right way. It is not my style to take individual credit for any of our achievements. To me, each thing we have achieved and will achieve is due to a large team working together to make that happen. I am content to know that I do make a difference, and a difference that I believe is to the advantage of our town. But I also know we can do better. We can communicate better, we can listen better, and we can work better as a team. One thing I have learned from my corporate experience is that what you achieved yesterday is yesterday. Today is a new day. We all need to ask what can and what should be, what should we do better? What should we improve on today and tomorrow? Never stop thinking like that. Never rest on past achievements. Thank you all for being here today. A healthy and successful 2025 to everyone. Thank you. Okay, Council President Sax.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to give the duly-elected officials the next chance to speak, so Brian and Layton, you can choose between the two of you, which, who would like to go first? Hard to go after Layton, but okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for being here. I want to give a love shout-out to my significant other, the love of my life, Tisha Jamaat, for coming here tonight and holding the Bible for me. And also want to give a shout-out to another love of my life, my best friend Doug Palmer, who, for the last 73 years, we've been together, and I've learned a lot from him as a good friend and also as the first African-American mayor of the great city of Trenton, capital of New Jersey. So again, welcome and thanks for being here. Good evening, family, colleagues, neighbors, and friends. As I begin my second term on this council, I am humbled by the trust you've placed in me and emboldened by the responsibility it carries. Being a native son of Princeton gives me a unique vantage point. I've walked these streets my entire life, and my love for this town and its people run deep. This isn't just where I live. It's who I am. Over the past three years, I've worked to embody what it means to be a local representative, someone who listens, learns, and leads with integrity and passion. Through initiatives like Layton Listens, where I meet with residents at local retail establishments every Wednesday, I've heard firsthand the joys, frustrations, and aspirations of our community. Often, it's not about doing anything at all. People simply want to be heard. The act of listening has shaped my leadership and grounded my work. In my first term, I focused on affordable housing, social services, and strengthening the human infrastructure that makes Princeton more livable and equitable for everyone. Have I had 100% success at everything? No. Will I continue to work towards completion and getting in more good trouble? Yes. As liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission, I spent considerable time thinking about how we hold on to the stories, structures, and spaces that define who we are, especially in neighborhoods like Witherspoon-Jackson. But let me be honest. I'm not in the room for every zoning or land use discussion. That's not my lane. Yet, I see the effects. I see the big picture. And let me tell you, it's very complicated. We're standing at a crossroads, perhaps one of the most critical points in Princeton's history. Take a walk down Witherspoon Street. Once a vibrant hub of Black families and businesses, it's now a neighborhood transformed. Homes that once sold for $150,000 are now pushing $750,000 or more. Longtime residents, some whose families lived here for generations, are gone. The word gentrification gets thrown around, but let's be clear. This isn't just about rising property values. It's about displacement, culture, and people losing their place in the story of Princeton. Gentrification isn't happening in isolation. It's the result of a system that privileges some at the expense of others. That system is embedded in zoning laws, land use policies, and even our approach to historic preservation. The question is, how do we find balance? How do we preserve the past while making room for the future? Real equity means more than just maintaining buildings. It means preserving the stories and ensuring that Princeton remains a place for everyone. It means asking hard questions. Can we integrate affordable housing into every part of town? Can zoning encourage not just economic diversity but cultural and racial diversity as well? As we look ahead, we'll tackle some priorities like strengthening our collaboration with the Princeton Housing Authority to address building pathways to reduce operational costs through shared services agreements and other initiatives that improve the quality of life for our underserved residents. Implementing an affirmative marketing plan that ensures our affordable housing obligation is met with integrity and inclusivity. Addressing short-term rentals in a way that balances economic opportunity with community stability. Expanding mental health education and outreach, particularly for our youth and seniors. Exploring innovative revenue streams to build equity for marginalized communities. Working with experienced Princeton on economic development, retail recruitment, retail mix, helping to make our downtown even more dynamic and diverse. Working with our qualified purchasing agent to address findings in the New Jersey Procurement Disparities Study and ensure fair opportunities for minority and women business enterprises. Fostering greater equity and inclusion in how we approach land use and redevelopment. Strengthening the role of art, culture, and music as a tool to build community and foster connections. A message to the architects, developers, and builders of this town: every brick, every beam, and every project sends a message. Are we creating a Princeton that welcomes everyone or one that prices out working families, immigrants, people of color? My grandmother used to say, "Every shut eye ain't sleep." Just because folks aren't making noise doesn't mean they're not paying attention. And let's be clear, people are paying attention. I've spent the past three years being a good student of good governance, learning the intricacies of policy, the complexity of bureaucracy, and the weight of the responsibility that comes with this seat. Governance isn't just about having vision. It's about having the skill, the courage, and the persistence to navigate the maze of systems and structures that stand between ideas and action. I've done the homework. I've asked the hard questions. I've built the relationships. Now I'm ready. Ready to lead with even greater purpose, deeper resolve, and sharper focus. The stakes are too high. The clock is ticking. The time to hesitate is gone. We can't afford half-measures or empty promises. We need bold action, unwavering commitment, and a willingness to shake the foundations of the status quo. I'm here to get in some good trouble, the kind of trouble that right's wrongs, amplifies voices, and opens doors that have been closed for far too long. I'm here to govern with the intentionality that time demands, to fight for those who've been left behind and to make sure Princeton's future is one we can all share in. This isn't just about Princeton. This is about the Prinstons across the country, towns struggling to hold on to their history, their people, and their promise. What we do here matters, not just for today, but for generations to come. I am Layton Newland. I am for the people. And I am ready to work harder, think bigger, and fight smarter to ensure that Princeton lives up to its highest ideals. Let's get to work. The best version of Princeton is still ahead of us, and we will build it together. Thank you.
Lesson one, try not to speak after Layton. Good evening. Let me begin with a lot of gratitude. Thanks to everyone who supported me in the primary and general elections. I'm deeply grateful for that support and honored to serve as a member of Princeton Council. Thanks to our state and local leaders who are here, especially Governor Murphy and Senators Wicker. Thanks to Eve Niedergang for six years of distinguished service on council and for her decades of service to our community. Thanks to everyone who has served on this council or its predecessors, Borough Council and Township Committee. These are time-consuming and difficult jobs, and as a 30-year resident, I'm grateful for the service of members of the governing bodies, the mayors, the staff, and many hundreds of volunteers who have served on our boards, committees, and commissions. I would like to mention two public servants by name who I had the privilege to work with. First, Liz Lempert, who with Scott Sillers and Xavier got me involved almost 15 years ago as a member of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. Liz has encouraged me and many others to be engaged and involve citizens, and I am grateful for her past leadership, for her continued service to our community. for her past leadership, for her continued service to our community and for her friendship. Second, I would like to take a moment to remember Bernie Miller. Bernie was a wonderful person and a dedicated public servant whose memory and spirit will guide me as I seek to honor his commitment to our town. I am grateful for his past leadership and for the manner in which he served. Finally, special thanks to my wife Leah, who for more than 30 years has supported me in my efforts to give back to my community. I want to honor her own service to our community, which has been longstanding and exemplary. In yesterday's snow, she still drove to arm-in-arm to do her weekly shift as a volunteer. So thank you Leah, for your love and support and for your service to our community. In August, I sat on a panel with other candidates for local office. We were joined by then Congressman and now Senator Andy Kim. Andy remarked that service isn't just a job, it's a way of life. I couldn't agree more and look forward to rolling up my sleeves and getting to work. Princeton is a special town, but we are at a pivotal time. We are growing and as we grow, we must ensure that our growth is smart, sustainable and respectful of our unique character. At a time when the average home costs well in excess of $1 million, we must find ways to make our town more affordable for individuals and families at all income levels so that our significant diversity, which is one of our great strengths and defining characteristics, may be sustained and expanded. Climate change requires us to increase our resiliency to cope with more extreme weather events and to protect our environment and continue to be a state leader in sustainability. With the changing economy, we need to maintain a vibrant downtown that supports local businesses while also nurturing other areas of commercial activity, including the shopping center and Route 206 at the northern edge of town. And we need to do all of this while delivering services that are excellent, efficient and serve the needs of all residents while working to hold tax increases as low as possible. Finally, Princeton has an incredible number of exceptional nonprofit institutions. We must nourish strong partnerships with our institutions ranging from the YMCA and YWCA to the Princeton Public Library and the Arts Council, the Institute for Advanced Study, the Seminary, Princeton University and especially our public schools. And we must work closely with our houses of faith. I hope to bring fresh perspectives to the council and to help find solutions to the full spectrum of challenges and opportunities that our town will face in the coming years. Thank you again for your support.
So someone among us who will remain unnamed recently said that listening to us is more boring than C-SPAN. So I'm gonna try to be brief. First, I want to congratulate all three of our newly elected Leighton, Mark and Brian. Brian, coming from the school board to council, all I can say is frying pan to fire. But you're well-prepared. I also want to thank my family, especially my mom, who I wish could be here, but it has been a very difficult year for her. And she's watching and I want to say, Mom, you sometimes ask me if I love the town more than you. And I want to say that since this is my hometown, you have both parented me, but I'm very grateful that, Mom, you are far less demanding than the town. So thank you for that. I want to thank my husband and all the spouses of the governing body members and Beth, who really, it's very difficult. You all put up with a lot and sacrifice a lot to put up with what we're doing, which is so meaningful for us. And so thank you to my husband, who rides New Jersey Transit daily. So on his behalf, since we have some state officials here, I just want to say, I hope we can do a little better. And I'm very glad that there is a Princeton resident who is now gonna head up the rescue effort for New Jersey Transit and that gives me some hope. And to my son, who was just here to swear me in, I am so proud of you. And as a senior at Princeton High School, you embody what our public school system gives to the students who go through it. And it, as I say, it produces, as I often say, it produces young people who graduate with a tremendous sense of commitment to their community, to their country, to the world at large, to sustainability, to human rights, to civil rights and to making the world a better place. And I believe that we have the finest high school in the country and I'm so proud of my son and all of the students who will graduate from Princeton High School this year. Okay, I'm already sounding like C-SPAN. It's just hard for me to talk tonight without thinking about what weighs heavily on all of us and that is the election of the past year. And I have reached out in the past few weeks to constituents in our community and asked them what they would like to see from us in the next year. And I think the thing that I've heard the most is anxiety about what's coming in the new administration. So I'd like to talk a little bit about hope and leadership and local action for a better future. At a time when national policies may discourage us or even stand in direct opposition to these principles, I want to share a message of hope and determination. What are the values that bind us as a community? Values of inclusion, fairness and stewardship. In our community, progress will not depend solely on what happens in Washington DC. It will depend on what we choose to do together here and now. Despite the challenges, we're committed to proving that local action can drive meaningful change. Whether it's standing up for immigrants' rights, expanding access to affordable housing or advancing sustainability, we have the power to lead and inspire others to follow. What does that mean in practice? First and foremost, defending immigrants' rights. Immigrants enrich our community in countless ways as workers, business owners, neighbors and friends. While federal policies will soon undoubtedly seek to marginalize or exclude, we in Princeton are committed to making this community a place where everyone feels valued and welcomed. Second, tackling the housing crisis with equity. Affordable housing is a cornerstone of a just and inclusive community. While exclusionary zoning policies perpetuate housing inequities, we are taking bold steps to ensure that everyone has a place to call home. Third, leading on sustainability for a greener future. Sustainability isn't just a nice-to-have, it's a promise to future generations. Even as federal policies may threaten to roll back environmental protections, we in Princeton are committed to proving that local government can lead the way in fighting climate change. What gives me hope is the resilience and determination of our community. Time and again, we have proven that when we come together, we can overcome obstacles and build something better. So let's not be discouraged by what we can't control. Instead, let's focus on what we can achieve together because the future we want, a future of inclusion, opportunity and sustainability, isn't just a dream. We're already building it right here in Princeton with every policy we enact, every program we launch and every neighbor we support. Thank you to my colleagues for your partnership, vision and commitment to creating a brighter, more hopeful future for this town.
Brian, as you learned, sometimes it's not so easy to go after Leighton. But let me say that there's times when it actually, it is a good thing. Because Leighton, you know, I have found our time working together that we share the same values, the same hopes, aspirations and what we dream about, how we want to make our community better. Because you are so great at expressing and so eloquent at expressing what I'm thinking and, you know, that it's not such a bad thing to go after you because I can say what he said. And that means I can also keep my remarks very brief. You can thank me later. Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. As I embark on my eighth year on Princeton Council, I take a moment to reflect on my work over the past seven years. And I need my reading glasses. Not only our combined achievements, but also the tasks that still lie ahead. My primary objective has always been to advance policies that enhance the quality of life for our residents, particularly those in underserved communities who have historically been overlooked. We have made significant progress in various areas that address these needs. For example, we have implemented policies that have created and will continue to create more affordable housing. Additionally, we have launched initiatives that provide healthcare access to many individuals who might not otherwise receive the care that many of us take for granted, including medical, dental and vision care, as well as vaccines for everyone, including uninsured individuals. Each year, our governing body convenes to establish our goals. Individually, we each have a list of aspirations and after compiling these, we engage in discussions to prioritize our objectives before deciding on our collective focus. I bring this up because as I reflected on the goals we've set during my time on council, I believe that we have made commendable progress. There's still much work to be done, but experience has shown that as long as we collaborate, we can achieve great things. We recognize our responsibility to meet the needs of those we serve and to create policies that will uplift our community. I would like to express my gratitude to everyone who has played a role in our success. Our municipal staff, our community partners and of course, our friends and family who have consistently offered their support and encouragement over the years. Muchisimas gracias con todo corazón.
Not to be a total downer, but I'm gonna pick up on Mia's theme and talk a little bit about response to the election. After the election, it seems like we should be redoubling our commitment to those municipal efforts most likely to be negatively impacted by the change in administration at the federal level. I'm sure we all have our own fears and forebodings about what the next couple of years will bring. From a purely selfish perspective, when I think about my grandkids, what keeps me up at night is concern about climate change, both how to slow it and how to be prepared for it. I've been working on these goals ever since I was first elected in 2017, serving as the council liaison to the Climate Action Plan Steering Committee, supporting sustainable development and smart growth through participation on the planning board, advocating for alternative forms of transportation like biking and walking, exploring community solar and community energy aggregation on our Infrastructure and Operations Committee and pushing for better stormwater management to mitigate the regional increase in extreme storm events. Really, that's just to mention a few of the things that we've worked on in the past seven years. In response to the new threats embodied in slogans like "Drill, baby, drill," I have been moved to up my game by joining the Local Policy Climate Network. Thanks to Eve for introducing me to a former councilman from Cambridge who is now working on that with that group. I've applied to participate in the 2025 Champions Institute for Complete Streets. I've been participating in the Watershed Institute's Regional Working Group for the Lower Millstone River Watershed and I've been serving on the Central Jersey Transportation Forum Steering Committee. And I just want to mention, there's sort of a theme here. All of these sort of newer efforts are efforts to reach beyond the boundaries of Princeton. We can do a lot here, but we also really have to be responding on a regional level to try and maximize our impact in resisting some of the trends we see nationally. If you'd like to hear more about any of these initiatives and all the other things I'm working on, or you want to share your own ideas, please reach out. It's easy to find my email on the municipal website. I'd love to get together and strategize how best we can all rise to meet the challenge of this moment in America through local and regional action. Thanks.
Would they say, last but not least? So I'd like to, well, first of all, thank Eve for all your service. We're gonna miss you terribly, but really pleased that Brian is on board now. Welcome and congratulations to Leighton, Mark and Brian for your reelection. I would like to kind of delve into the theme too about the trepidation, about what's gonna happen at the national level. I feel personally like doubling down and saying, "Let's do all we can here locally." What did they say? Politics starts at the local level and it's all local. So I think we are so honored and fortunate to share these values, our common theme between all of us here on council. I'd like to start off too by talking a little bit about some of the initiatives on more of a positive note because it's hard to think about the things that we're gonna need to hold dear to us and what's gonna happen here in the future, the very near future. I have to say that every time we start reorg, we always talk about all the work we have to do and then once we check the box, there's like two or three more projects that fill. Looking back, just in the last year, we've built tremendously on the successes. For instance, on my Special Improvement District, Experience Princeton, we work to make the town more welcoming to businesses of all sizes, to attract and retain the small owner-operated businesses that give our town their special, unique character. We also support the larger establishments because they're a great draw. Just this past year, we added enormous investment. We saw enormous investment in our commercial sector. We had a new hotel, many new restaurants in retail, all with a very positive impact on the vibrancy of our town. So we continue to support the growth of our Centers of Commerce and new residential developments by working to enhance the transit solutions. This year, we're planning an expansion of our Muni bus routes with our two new EV buses that will be delivered this year. They will move residents, visitors, students and employees around town. We need to continue to work hard to find better solutions for our residents, commuting employees, students and visitors, including increased bike and micro mobility infrastructure. David, you've been a champion of that from the very beginning. I've learned a lot from you and the PBAC. We need more traffic calming, improved street scapes and improved and expanded parking facilities. I also need to mention, this is really exciting, this is the year we'll be getting the town ready for the 250th celebration. Princeton is central to the 10 crucial days of the revolution. Being ready to build on the enormous impact of this pivotal moment in our nation's history and creating long-term assets for heritage and cultural tourism for our town is a unique opportunity that takes a great deal of advanced planning and coordination between us, the town, Experience Princeton, our federal, state and county representatives and a wide variety of community partners. It's an exciting time for Princeton. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity with Westminster for public purposes that include recreation, educational, community and social services. We will soon undertake a community engagement process, which will be an exciting challenge. As with this property and all our other public buildings and assets, we need to make fiscally prudent decisions and we need to work towards finding the best purpose for our public assets that work for our residents. We are working to enhance our recreational facilities. We continue the process of revitalizing Community Park South. It's an important undertaking to provide access to sports and recreation, to provide a healthy lifestyle for our residents of all ages. In addition to enhancing community services and recreation, there is the Public Art Percent for Art Project, which we hope to launch in the coming year. Princeton has an incredible wealth of talent. Public art will enhance the identity and attractiveness of Princeton for both residents and visitors, amplify our cultural identity, community and visitors, amplify our cultural identity, community pride, and civic engagement, and provide a platform for creativity and innovation. I'm honored to work with all of you, and I know we share these common values and goals. Our interest areas and backgrounds are different, but we complement each other, and it's a pleasure to work with all of you. I want to put a special shout-out to my husband, George, who's here, and my sons for all the support you give me. I would not be able to dedicate the time to the town without your support, and I just want to thank you for that. As we enter 2025, we have this trepidation at the national level. Let's focus here, locally, on our town, and first and foremost, for the safety and security of our residents. It's an honor to serve you, and thank you all for being here tonight.
I just want to, I've selected to introduce one of the elected officials in the audience, Paula Salome-Cavelo, who's our county clerk. Paula, thank you very much. Next up on the agenda would be public comments for items not on the agenda. So if anyone in the room has a comment, you're welcome to come up, introduce yourself, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to chat about whatever it is that's not on the agenda. I don't see anybody in the room. Is there anybody online that...
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Nice to see you again. You're not smiling. I gave him a hard time Monday. You need me to introduce myself first? My name is Rhonda. My last name is A-B-B-O-T-T. I like to be contacted by my email address, which is discrimination, harms, lies, at Gentleman, your business administrator, he has my email address. My background, I graduated from Gallaudet University in Washington, D.C. It's the world's only deaf college. I transferred from the University of Florida, and I have two claims to fame. My grandmother's first cousin was a former governor, P.A. I don't know if anybody ever heard of Milton Schapp. You've heard of Milton Schapp? And my other claim is I'm known as the deaf poster lady. And what that means is the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination regulates posters under employee NJAC 3008 1.2, and the Family Leave Act, which is under 35, execute housing poster. There's two. One's for property management, the other's for mortgages and banks, under NJAC 3008 1.3. Public accommodation, NJAC 3008 1.4, and the state adopted medical facilities posters in 2022, NJAC 3008 1.5. There are six posters. What do you mean by poster lady? Long time ago, back in 2014, I noticed that nobody was displaying the public accommodation Princeton still isn't. I definitely visited this town in 2017. I came back. Every time I went door-to-door, nobody had the poster up. I was shocked because even if I didn't set the bar high here, you're Ivy League town, I set the bar at minimal complaints. The posters are mandated. I am shocked your municipality doesn't have the poster up, your court doesn't have the poster up, your police department doesn't have the poster up. This poster in 2022 says, including police department. The poster can't list everybody, but it does say courts, government agencies, even says including police department. I look at everybody in this room, and I say to myself, it just can't be one lone wolf, one deaf woman telling the posters not up. I have here members of council, and it says that Letitia Fager is on a civil rights commission. Haven't you heard of the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights?
Can I, can you, as one of the interpreters, to let her know that her time is up and she needs to wrap up?
My time limit's up, and if I have to say this, you're parking here. You've got a priority for parking if you don't have a priority for compliance under the ADA in the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination. And now that my time's up, I just gonna have to tell the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights, you're already void of offense, and I would like somebody to tell me who your ADA coordinator is, because I can file a complaint for denial of access to programs or services to the French. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that has anything under public comments for items not on the agenda? No one in the room? I see a hand up online. Who's ever worked in technology for us? Could you bring in Melissa? Melissa?
Hello?
Yeah, if you could just introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and then you have the same three-minute limit.
Sure. My name is Melissa Guzman. I'm at 85B Bayard Lane, Princeton, New Jersey, 08540. I would like to know where the Board of Education members and the council has credibility of a movement to reform education for America's lowest-income, a black and brown school children. My child specifically has been discriminated here at the Princeton Middle School, and I am now homeschooling. I would like to know how we are going to raise awareness of neglect of students with their economic and racial segregation going forward with educational needs of transformational change, especially with IEPs, and how our new superintendent is going to take ownership of how to provide a safe school climate for all, including cyberbullying. How are we going to have a good impact on our future and have our children all succeed going forward? How are you, as the mayor, for the next four years, going to work with your council and make sure that we are providing for your low-income family?
All right. Melissa, thank you for your comments. If you have the ability to email us at clerksoffice@princetonnj.gov, we will find a way to reply to you in a timely manner. Do we have anyone else online or in the room that has a comment? All right. Seeing no other hands up and no one else in the room, I'll declare the public hearing or the public comment section of the meeting closed. And that is the last item on our agenda, and as I love to say towards the end of each meeting, David, do you have a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Thank you, Michelle. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are done. Thank you for being here. I believe we have some light refreshments that are gonna be in the community room right down the hall, so you can either pretend you're going there or walk right by and go home. Either one, it's your call. Thank you.